Yeah, you need a pen?
Really?
Oh, really? That was good.
That one does get a new kind of food.
Oh, yeah.
Very good. I have a rig for the, uh, similar.
Yeah, when I get these inhalants, it's a stick. Not too many people.
I don't run from my chair.
And I got these because, um, I could go Wi-Fi like the, uh, the two sides. I mean, there's a box. It's got great use. The only thing is the sensor. These are cool. They're easy. But these are cool because, uh, they're maps that can, uh, teach us. And they're cool. They're pretty good for the, uh, for white shirts. You should, uh, stop by sometime if you have any time. Show me yourself. Stop by the station if you had any time. What are you doing?
Morning.
How you doing?
Good, how are you? I have to look twice and see, who's behind the mask?
You know, I never thought that I would be masking up. I'm going to bang it, looking away my finger from what came out.
I was getting the air. White river. And the truck pulls up alongside you. I'm going to put on my mask. It's got a state of irony of pulling up to a gas station next to a shop.
Well, I was helping Alan. What, router? And rolling the stuff. Actually, we've seen that in movies.
And then they get the fling.
He wouldn't let me ask.
That's my call?
That's what you're doing. So, I'll leave you to the end. It's going to bring over the roof. You know, I don't think the brown. Okay, good. So, it's, um, would I have not seen?
Yeah. We're all outside.
When do I come in? I'm meteoric.
Actually, which article are you supposed to be on?
One and six, the ones I don't want to say.
I'm not even gonna.
Okay, good.
We don't, we don't have any reports. So, I'm just gonna, on one, I'm just gonna ask if there is a report. If there is somebody makes a report, then I'll ask you.
So, we don't need that article?
And, you know, it's not really a motion. I'm really welcome, because there's no binding system. I just ask if there's any other pictures to be handled. Yeah, these, these are up on, uh, to, yeah, most of the show. That's a good, uh, provided. Like at the co-op.
I'd say that.
On the fly right there. I don't know about the general.
We've got, we've got.
Maybe. Only wants to tell us how that works.
I'm with him.
Now, you.
Just say that I can't say anything.
Would I come into this? Wouldn't believe this guy. We all exactly could be right.
That's a good answer.
We're in a battle to say like this.
I just don't want a whole bunch of that.
Three minutes.
Yeah, right. You're not going to get a. This is what's up. The more we educate, the more we marvel.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah, I did.
But, you know, it's funny. This is the first thing that we've got. We've got a big sign.
Now, my father is so negative. I'm surprised they're looking like he went down.
What's that? That's a great way to put it.
But the Romans didn't look fine, maybe.
He did. Putney did a, uh, an idea that's kind of a little. It's quite a mandate, but. One minute to go. I've used your gloves. Sounds good. Yeah, if I have to pick something up, I figured I'd use those.
You want me to change? You want to change it now?
Yeah. See if it's better? Yeah, it is. Yep. Yeah, sweet. Yeah, I've got it.
Over there.
Since we're starting with Mike, I think I might as well get that back.
Okay, folks, um, it's about 10 now, and we're going to try and keep this to a good schedule. So, before we get into the particulars of the meeting, Mike Merwicki is here, and he'd like to give you a couple of words on what a disaster the finances of the state are.
How do I live up to that?
Or you can go to that one that's set up if you want. There's one set up right straight ahead.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, you just use the standing mic there.
There's a, uh, white line there that's a good spot to stand.
All right.
Hi, can you hear me? Well, thank you. Well, thanks for coming out here today and giving me a chance to share a little bit. As you might know, the legislature's been working overtime to look at first the health and safety concerns and then the economic concerns. That's our primary focus. The reason I wanted to be here is to say that we've been working to make sure towns don't take a big hit because of the economic uncertainty. So, what we're doing with the general budget is we passed a budget yesterday in the House just for the first quarter. And then we're going to come back in August when we get better financial numbers to look at the rest of this year. And what we hope to do with the general budget is what we just did last week with the education budget. With education, we're looking at a $150 million deficit. If we were to dump that on the taxpayers in this year, it would be a huge tax increase. Usually, the state rate goes up two, three, four cents. It would be in the 25 cent range. We're not going to do that. What we're doing is we're going to use reserves to cover that. And then our hope is, we actually have a seven-point plan, but I'll tell you the short. In the last recession, the Obama administration sent money to the state to cover shortfalls like this. Our hope is next year, in the next budget with the next president, this will be the same thing happening, that the federal government will send the states' monies to cover shortfalls like that. The current assistance doesn't allow for that. So, we're going to cover it with funds we already have. We actually have a significant amount in the rainy day budget. So, Plan B is if that doesn't come through from the feds, then we will spread that amount over five years and pay it back that way. So, that way, it's not a huge hit the way it would be if we did it in one year. And moving forward with the, with the general fund budget, we hope likewise to make sure towns don't get a big hit or a significant dump in one shot. The other thing we've done that is affecting towns is we're aware that in the next few months, as town taxes are due, many people are going to have trouble paying them. And towns may come up short and have to borrow in the short term. What we've done is we've worked with our state treasurer to enact a plan where towns go out and get loans as they would. I mean, this happens in other times. But the state would cover the interest, the cost of borrowing right now. So, again, it mitigates the damage done to the towns, uh, at least a little bit, because, you know, borrowing can be significant, and the cost of it in short term especially can be significant. That's basically all I wanted to say, that, um, not to dispel Fletcher's admonition of the problems we're having, but we're trying to mitigate them as best we can, especially at the town levels. The towns are not taking a big hit. And as we move forward, we're going to keep working with towns and making sure we do what we can to make sure, uh, what lies ahead, which we don't know, isn't going to impact the towns adversely or too adversely. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you and to serve you. And if you have questions, I'm going to be around. You can always email me. And if you're still out there and out of work and not getting unemployment, that's been the biggest thing we've been trying to do, is work with people to get unemployment benefits. Call me, call any legislator. We're working on that, too. So, thank you very much. Thanks, Mike. That was also a good demonstration of how we're going to have to handle the, uh, speakers and the acoustics here. That microphone that Mike was speaking a few feet away from is set up to pick up a voice from setback. And if you want to speak to an article, I'm going to ask that you come line up to, to take your turn at that microphone, because I don't think if, you know, if the wind kicks up in particular, we're not going to hear what you have to say. So, the protocol's going to be if you want to speak on an article, come stand by the mic. When your turn comes, uh, you know, stay a bit back from the mic, but state your name and then say your piece. If you're going to make a motion, of course, we'll need a second, but we can just do that by somebody raising their hand, I think. Um, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over the usual preliminaries. We only just had a town meeting recently. I think you all remember it. It's, uh, and I think you all know the basic ground rules. You have to base, today, you're going to have to come up to the mic to, if you want to speak to an article. But basically, you have to be recognized to speak to the article. If you want to make a motion, your motion has to be seconded. You know, then we'll take it from there. Okay, without a lot of further preliminaries, let's get right into it. I do have a, a bit of a warning. The legal voters of the town of Westminster are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Westminster Institute at Westminster, Vermont on Saturday, June 6, 2020, at 10 o'clock in the morning to take action on the following articles. Article one is to hear reports of the town officers. I'm not aware that we have any reports yet, so before we get a motion on it, I'll ask whether any of the town officers have anything new to report to us. Seeing none, I will, uh, rule that we have disposed of Article one. Article two, Ms. Young.
I move, I move the article is warned.
Article two, shall the voters authorize the sum of $170,000 to be transferred from the fiscal year 2018, 2019 general fund surplus into the capital improvement fund for the renovation of the Westminster Town Hall, previously established by Article 15 at the annual meeting of March 1, 1999? Is there a second to Article two? Somebody got that? Shell got that. Article two is moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Ms. Young, do you wish to speak to the article?
Uh, this, excuse me. This requested amount will finish the office space renovation with the completion of technical support system upgrades, office space creations, creating storage spaces, new flooring, heating ductwork upgrade, interior painting, and electrical improvements to meet the modesty code. This has been in the works for quite a while, and, um, you can't hear. Is that better? Okay, sorry.
Yell right into it.
All right. So, you know, in a sense, nobody has had an opportunity to see what the town hall looks like right now because it's closed and nobody's, you know, because of the coronavirus. But it is, um, every, everything has stopped in there. And the money that you will be voting for today, we hope, will enable us to continue and finish the project. And this has been, I've been on the board on and off for many, many years. And, uh, this is 20 years ago when it was first decided that there would be, um, that there would be a, um, renovation of the town hall, and we're finally getting it done. So, um, I hope that you can find, uh, something that you would agree with. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak on Article two? If so, you can head up to the mic.
So, I'm Katie Dearborn, Westminster resident. Can we have an accounting of what funds have already been spent on the building? For anybody that can give a figure as to what has been spent? I know we recently negotiated the contract, um, after it came to the attention that it wasn't negotiated. I'm just curious to know how much money we've put into that building so that we can make a decision whether this amount is also going to be added.
Is there someone who can respond?
I think it's really hard to figure out if you want to invest some more money into something if you don't know how much has already gone into it, especially when we're supporting an article that was in 99.
Well, I think one of the problems with answering you is that there has been, um, you know, work done along the way. And, you know, after all, it's a long time ago. And right now, we know that this is the figure that we need to finish the work. You know, this was put out to bid, uh, when we were starting this, this chapter of the repairs. And, um, I guess we, uh, Russ put out the bid to, um, to quite a lot of people, you know, to all the people that would be able to do the work. And we only got one response. And we felt that it was a fair amount. It is, uh, it's not a cheap thing to do, but it's going to be a final thing to do.
I think the hard part for me is I understand that there was some money from, um, the Westminster Meats, um, grant money. There was some money that was moved from one fund to do some, I think, maybe the elevator, because it fell into the category of what that money could be used for. And I think that if I was doing a project at my house, I would want to account for the dollars and cents that were spent on it. And I think it's fair for the taxpayers to have an understanding of how much money has gone into that building so that we can make a decision whether it's something we're going to do this year or next year or when it's going to be done. So, I'm, I'm a bit disappointed that there's not some kind of accounting of those numbers, because I think it helps everybody determine if it's an amount of money that we want to continue to invest.
I have a handout.
I'm really just hoping that we can answer her question.
They're working on it. You got something, Russ?
Why are you doing that? Let me explain. We did two different things. There's, can you hear me?
Nope.
There's two different things that go on when we do this. And one of the things was, yeah, we had grant money to do the front stairs, because that was a handicap. We did actually have some other money to update the furnace system, which we actually did like about six years ago. We also had money set aside for maintenance. We had to put the, the top of the roof had to be fixed. We had to upgrade the roof. So, we never counted those as capital investment like what we're asking for you today, because we had done quite a bit of maintenance just like on all our buildings to take care of it. We would have to go back, I think we could, and separate what was maintenance that we would have spent on that building and what was really what we're coming to you as actually a capital improvement. We're, we're changing the room, we're updating it, we're putting it so we can have computer systems. And it was something, I've been on the board now going on 15, 16 years. I was on the original committee that we were looking at to do this, and I think Paul was there, too. And, uh, we've been looking at this for a long time, realized that the voters, at the bottom line, didn't want to build another building, didn't want to live anywhere else. So, we finally decided this is the building we're going to be in. And what we need to now, one is to take care of it, put an air conditioner, put heat in it, upgrade the system, upgrade the electrical. And then now we're coming to the finished product is actually to change the rooms over and put the computer system in.
Further discussion of Article two. Yes, please state your name.
Steven Major. And I'd like to call the question.
Mr. Major calls the question. Is there a second calling the question?
We haven't got an answer yet.
Vote no.
Doesn't matter. Do we have a second?
What's the point in discussion?
I'm not seeing a second. Sure? Mr. Major's motion is seconded. This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that didn't get two-thirds. I think it was pretty easily split. So, unless somebody objects to that ruling, um, the discussion is still on.
I object.
You object? That means that you have to have a division of the House. All of those in favor of Mr. Major's motion, please stand.
Ellen, get this dog on a leash now.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. VCA's done.
Your face from here over.
I don't know. Break it up.
Fran, hop out from the white line over.
Okay.
See the vibrations off the table?
Things have changed.
I got 11, but I don't.
I've got, I've got six.
You have a whole thing, okay?
One person, yeah, one person here. I think that makes sense.
I got the new one. You got it.
One person.
No, no, I mean.
Only one person.
Oh, I'm not counting. You want me to back to it? Watch him help Susan. He's a no.
I'm standing.
We haven't counted yet, folks?
I, I know you're saying he's over. Does he seem to, since he's counted?
Get the lady in the car.
Do, 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 have people count off that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, we got a big possibility. No, I'm trying to count what you have.
Well, you only can count people inside the ribbon.
I was, but I figured you guys had counted by now. Have people count off?
No, don't count.
You've got to sit down then if you don't want to be checked.
And just thank you.
Susan, are you counting yourself?
I'm not counting.
I counted 28 at that night.
Have you got us here?
Yeah. Well, yeah. I didn't get, I didn't get pleasure that you've gone that far.
I'm not voting, I don't vote.
Even why?
I mean, you did.
When we vote to break the tie.
Yeah, but I didn't.
One question. I'm not the moderator.
Actually, does this seem to be two-thirds of the people in order to pass? Because it seems pretty clear to me that we don't constitute two-thirds of people. Can we just say that and get on with the meeting?
Well, we said it once, and we got an objection, and that means under the rules, we have to have a division of the House. Where, do we have a count on the ayes? What's that?
Use 33.
33?
Yep.
Okay, all those opposed to Mr. Major's motion, please stand.
Paul, are you standing for, you're standing to vote? Paul is standing to vote.
Thank you.
I made you get my size.
That makes it 33.
Looks like 33 again.
33 to 33 is a tie. You need two-thirds to carry the motion. The motion fails. The question is not called. We resume discussion. Is there someone who wishes to speak to Article two?
Robert Wickberg. Can you hear it?
No.
Yep, we got it.
I think how much we have spent, which seems to be the question everybody wants answered, is a fair question, but I'm not sure that it's a fair question to just ask from the floor of the town meeting. It's, as Russ. As has been said, it's a, it's a multi-year project. I don't think you can expect the, the select board or your town manager to have every single last figure. Oh, you're going to answer the question now? Oh, you're going to answer the question now?
Yeah, let me just read it. So originally, back in two thousand six, seven, we were looking at it. In two thousand eight, we decided we had some money set aside to do repairs, and we moved it over to the capital fund. So we started out with fifty-four thousand nine hundred thirteen in two thousand eight. So in two thousand nine, we started to do some repair work, and we spent eleven thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars on insulating the floor. We updated the furnace system in the office. We went over insulating underneath, basically all around the foundation underneath. Two thousand eleven, we actually redid the whole vault system. I don't know if you remember, but remember, we had to actually tear the vault part, update it all, and we spent twenty-three thousand sixty-two dollars and upgraded the vault system. Two thousand thirteen, we spent nineteen thousand seven hundred eighty-nine, completely doing a blown-in insulation all the way around the building, from the outside, to update it there. In two thousand fourteen, we spent forty-four thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars on painting the cupola on top and all, and the whole building. We did spend quite a bit of money on that cupola, which I still question, but whatever. Two thousand fifteen, we spent eighteen thousand three hundred seventy-nine in redoing the whole front doors. We actually had to have them built in from scratch, and we had to actually fix the foundation to do it. In two thousand, uh, in sixteen, we actually spent fourteen thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars on Arnold Escagas on the design. That's what we spent to actually lay it out, come up with some kind of agreement of what the building would finally look like inside. And we also spent four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars in two thousand sixteen to upgrade the whole server system. So it is hard, it's a good question, but it's hard to separate if we were never to put capital investment, never to re, uh, upgrade the office, a lot of these would have been just repairs that we would have spent. And sometimes, we maybe, when we did repairs, we upgraded it while we were doing it. So that's basically everything we've done on that building since two thousand and nine.
Further discussion on Article Two. Yeah? We got somebody at the mic here.
The human brain here says a hundred and thirty-four or a hundred and thirty-five K.
If you want to be recognized and address the meeting, please go to the microphone. Yes, this meeting.
My name is Julia Rickles.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I look a little similar, thank you. I guess my question is, what happens if we don't allocate the funds? You said that the building is sort of in transition. Is it?
Get closer to the microphone, yeah.
My main question is, what happens if we don't allocate these funds? What is the state of the town hall right now? Are there any legal ramifications? Do you have a contract that you're obligated to pay? What happens if we don't today decide to spend these funds on the town hall?
Didn't someone respond?
I'd like to.
He's there every day, so.
The town hall right now is open to one researcher a day for the space requirements to continue to do what's safe for all of us. We have two offices that are two-thirds done that we can't use.
Hold the mic up a little more.
We have put all of our excess stuff in them, but temporary. We've got plastic hanging, we have wires hanging. Our server is not completed, and our, our IT room is not completed. We are under dismay, because we have literally stopped our process halfway through a contract to give you the opportunity to justify the hundred and seventy thousand that we need. It is surplus. It has been, as you all know, voted on many, many times, and we had kind of counted on that money to continue, and when it gets stocked, we are not in a position to, to continue like we are. Ally has, has done a fantastic job keeping researchers one at a time every day, doing their, their thing to keep us financially and economically viable for our town. At this point, I'm sorry, I'm breathing hard because this mask is off. At this point, we, we have to do something. We can't leave it the way it is. Fire and safety will step in at some point and tell us we're not any longer in the construction, we're, we're in a point of, of maintenance. So we're begging, people that work in the building, we're begging you to, to do this, because it's, it is a tough place to work right now. As for what Craig was doing, he didn't continue. The modern-day contracts from Brennan, the last two, have brought us to the point where we are at now. And the other thing that should be noted is that our cha, our needs have changed over the years. We are now into cyber alerts and, and in the need of, of a better server, so that has been upgraded. Our building now needs more paint. Our walls and such have been taken down, and we're finding, you know, very large structural discrepancies in them. So all of this is, is, is good work to be done, but we're, we're, we're begging you guys to please pass this article, because it's, right now, we are, we're kind of in dismay. So I would, I would love to ask, answer questions.
So, yes, so my question. So my question is really, what happens if we don't allocate these funds? It basically sounds like our town hall is not functional at this point.
It's functional to the point of one researcher a day and not the public. We've been doing service on the stairs, and I think we've been doing a pretty good job with trash and et cetera, but it is not your town hall anymore. It's, it's the four or five of us that are in there trying to make do with, with research and, and help that we can possibly muster for you, but.
And are there any legal ramifications as per the contract with the contractors if we don't pass this? Are we under contract to pay them, these funds?
We have opted out of our contract with agreeance to the contractor that he would get the work back if we ever did get started again. So no, there is not, there's not legal ramifications on our contract.
Thank you. So I would just like to note that at the best of times, I've had trouble getting my property lines straight with the town, and I think it's probably a good idea for all of us to have a functional town hall in the future. Thank you.
Further comment on Article Two?
Katie Dearborn. So I, I feel like we're in a situation where we're in an emergency. We're in a situation where the town hall administration had a plan to do some work on the building, and we now have an article before us, and we're hearing from Russ that the workplace and where people work is not of best conditions. I'm really disappointed that we're here having to hear this from you. When projects like this happen, you would think that we would come up with a plan. We'd come to the voters, we'd say, these are things that need to happen. The emergency situation that I'm feeling like we're in is a casualty of you not getting this information to us in a timely fan, fashion with the history, so that we can make a decision. And I feel like time after time, I stand at these meetings, and there's an emergency kind of decision that has to be made, and we don't have all of the information. I very much appreciate Craig going through the list of things, but I think you stopped at two thousand and sixteen. That's four years' worth of maintenance or renovations that have happened that we didn't hear about. So if anybody's going to hang their hat on a hundred and thirty-five thousand that's gone into that building, I caution you, because that's not accurate. And I, if this information was available and it was crystal clear, I wouldn't be here asking. The audits that I've gone through, that other people have gone through, it's not clear. The fund balance is not accurate. And I think that, I thought we asked this at town meeting, to come up with how much money had been put into that building, and although you've gone through a list of stuff that's happened, whether it be renovations or regular maintenance, it's really not accurate. And I, I don't know if you will agree with me or disagree with me, but I think, again, having the numbers is important, especially if we're in a situation where it's an emergency, where the workplace is not conducive to public coming in. It should have been a part of the regular project, the scope of the work, the contract, and you can come to us and say, X number of dollars has been put in since nineteen ninety-nine, this is how much money we need, this is why we need it, and I just, I feel like that, the pieces aren't all there. And so I'm going to continue to vote no on this, which makes me sad, because I do want everyone to be able to access our building, and I want people to work there, to be in a good work environment. But making it an emergency is not going to make it pass in my book.
Further discussion of Article Two?
Charlotte Gifford. Can you hear?
Yes. It seems to me that we should bear in mind that all the notes that Craig just gave, one by one each, I believe, were voted on at those respective town meetings. Secondly, I would like to express sympathy, having recently gone through construction, having tried to divvy out what is exactly renovation and what is repair and rot and the like. It would be on our vol, nearly volunteer board, I think, a pretty hard lift to give that detail on every expenditure we make. I hope we don't descend to that level. I do support this, and I also would just note that if you can show me a contract, excuse me, a construction project that did not have unexpected elements that are uncovered in the process, I would be very surprised. I'm not surprised that there is this remaining work to be done that was delayed, and I would suggest that we simply do it.
Further discussion on Article Two?
David Ramos, Northwestern. I, I am for the project that they're asking for the funds for. However, if we do vote for this, what guarantee do we have that this won't occur again, that this type of thinking won't happen? Because Russ just said, we were under the assumption that we all would have voted it again. So I would like to know what guarantees we would have that this type of thinking won't occur again.
Select board care to respond to Mr. Ramos?
I think we're, we're hearing you. This is why this meeting has been called. This, we, we decided not to vote on it at the town meeting that occurred in March, and for Katie's, you know, when we, you're complaining that it's an emergency. Well, we had a very serious emergency across the entire globe since the meeting that we had in March, and so a lot of things could not have happened. But I think that we are hearing you now, and we understand that there were mistakes made, and that we were not being conscious of the feelings that were going on in the, in the general. And it wasn't, it wasn't anything that was meant to, to take advantage of, but we did it, and it was wrong, and we are voting on it now, and we hope that you will all support it, because you want to have a town, as Katie said, she wants to have a town hall, and to vote against it at this point seems unkind and, and not very smart.
Further discussion on Article Two. Are you ready for the question? Seeing nobody at the mic? All those in favor of Article Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'm going to rule that the ayes have it. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article Two is approved. Article Three, Mr. Beebe.
I approve. I approve Article Three.
We're going to treat that as a motion for Article Three. Shall the voters authorize the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be transferred from the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen general fund surplus into the Bridge Rehabilitation Fund for the preservation of our bridges previously established by Article Seventeen at the annual meeting of March two, two thousand ten? Is there a second to Article Three? Article Three is moved and seconded. Mr. Shelby, uh, Mr. Beebe, do you wish to address the motion?
Uh, no, there's not any questions. If there are questions, I will be glad to address them. I would be glad to address them if there are questions.
Are there questions or comments on Article Three? Seeing no one at the mic, I take it you're ready for the question. All those in favor of passing Article Three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Article Three appears to pass. Article Three does pass. You have adopted Article Three. Article Four, Mr. Allen.
I move the article as warned.
This is the one I wasn't looking forward to.
Thank you.
I can't, this mask makes it too hard to get my breath. Shall the voters authorize the sum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to be transferred from the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen general fund surplus into the contingency reserve fund pursuant to the reserve fund balance policy approved by Article Fourteen at the annual meeting of March two, two thousand nineteen? The transferred amount shall be divided into one hundred thousand dollars for working capital, not to exceed five percent of the annual budget, to cover unanticipated revenue shortfalls, and pay non-recurring and unanticipated general and highway fund expenditures of the town. The balance of one hundred fifty thousand dollars shall be designated for emergency capital, not to exceed fifteen percent of the annual budget, to be used for non-recurring and unanticipated emergencies as defined by the select board. Expenditure of emergency capital by the select board shall be in accordance with the reserve fund balance policy previously established by Article Fourteen at the annual meeting of March two, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Allen, do you wish to be heard on the article?
Well, I hope there's no questions, but just a quick, where we are. This hundred thousand is every year I've been on the select board. We look at it in June, what we're going to have to care, what we're going to give back to the voters for the next year, and what we're going to keep. We always keep normally between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand. We change a little bit each year, so we can start over the next year and have some money to start to work with. The fifteen percent of the hundred and fifty thousand, that's a new one that we just passed that we just started talking about. And the thing about the hundred and fifty that we put in, we're starting that fund, and when we get to about three hundred, we will just keep it there, and we wouldn't ask for it anymore. So hopefully, next year, we can ask you for some more, and that's obviously what we just passed for that emergency fund, and I think that explains it.
Are there questions or comments on Article Four? Yes, if you, if you line up at the mic, please.
Rail Basin. I'd like to amend the article to transfer the two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the fire district capital reserve, and if I get a second, I'll explain why.
Is there a second to Mr. Basin's motion?
I'll second it.
The mo, the motion is seconded. Mr. Basin, what's your thinking?
Well, in the recent year, this year itself, you know, we've got some trucks that are aging quite a lot, and the amount of money that we've been putting aside, forty thousand dollars, hasn't really covered our truck. So the engine in Westminster West is now forty-six years old. The rescue and brush truck in Westminster West is thirty-five years old. The busiest truck that we have is the rescue on this side is twenty-three years old, and I feel that this would help the fire district, we'd be able to replace one of them. Now, our engine, one, three, which was bought ten years ago, cost us two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. At today's price, that truck has gone up over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we're not keeping up with forty thousand dollars a year on our equipment, and we, this year will be our first year that we have a deficit spending, because we've had some extremely expensive repairs. And I think it will be, you know, taxpayers' dollars, be a perfect option to do, and you transfer some funds to the district, so next March, we can get approval to replace at least one of them. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, a motion. Okay, so we have a, a motion to amend on the floor, which we need to dispose of before we get back to the main motion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to Mr. Basin's amendment? Yes.
Charlotte Gifford, I would just inquire of the moderator if this motion is in order or if it substantially changes the nature of the First Amendment as warned, the article as warned.
It's a very good question. They're both municipal reserve funds. Pardon me while I think out loud. They're both municipal reserve funds, but technically the Fire District is a separate municipal entity from the town. So theoretically, this, the amendment would authorize the town to give money to a separate municipal entity. I'm troubled by that as well. I think I'll go with Ms. Gifford's suggestion and rule that the, the motion to amend is out of order as a creating a substitute, essentially a substitute article or subarticle. If, if anyone objects to that ruling, you can raise your objection and we can vote on whether to sustain me or not. Otherwise, I'm going to rule the, the motion to amend out of order. Seeing no objection, we'll take the amendment off the table. We're back to the main article, Article Four.
Jim Matho, I just don't understand the third sentence, which says, "The balance $150,000 shall be designated for emergency capital, not to exceed 15% of the annual budget." Does that mean, I don't know how much is already in such a fund, and does that mean that the total of that fund can't exceed 15%? And if that is what it means, what would the total be with this addition?
This is a new fund, there's nothing in it now. That's your question. And basically what the voters passed was that amount that we store, that we put aside is not to exceed 15%. Now, that could change a little bit on our budget every year, but at this point it would be 315,000 is what the voters gave us authority to put in, to save, I guess, to store over in case we need it for emergency fund.
Okay, so if I understand that meaning, then anything that would go beyond 15% of a given year's budget would require changing, an article that changed that limit.
Yeah, I assume that at that point we were looking at giving it back to the voters. The voters gave us approval, the 20%, and then they broke it up that way.
Thank you.
Further comment on Article Four?
Katie Dearborn. I'd like to address the Select Board Chair. Is there any intentions of accessing these funds in the next fiscal year? Has the Select Board had any conversations about utilizing any of the funds that are being set aside?
We have not. We have to pass the budget for next year. I think we're considering an emergency, emergency to be an emergency with something like Hurricane Irene or whatever. So, I mean, is that what you're?
Yeah, is it? And I, I need to just familiarize myself with the policies that were passed, but is it under the purview of the Select Board to use any of the emergency funds without vote? Or it's with vote, correct? And then the 100,000 working capital, that's within the purview of the Board to spend, how you see fit, based on your needs that you have with shortfall?
Right, essentially, so we can pay our bills before property taxes come in. We need, to need money to, you know, pay payroll, et cetera.
So it's just an anticipation of taxes, you may use this as working capital. This would never be earmarked for any road project or anything like that.
The 15, the 100,000, that's correct.
The 100,000 is just for emergency?
Operating, no.
I'm sorry, for working capital, for tax shortfall, cash flow, whatever it may be.
Every year we, we do a minimum of 100,000. So if you think about it, this year we already got 100,000 started. What we're saying is we're going to now take 100,000 and go to the next year to start. So that we're not starting with a, July 1st, we'd have an empty checkbook. And this gives us some leeway. But if you think about it, last year, I don't have it with me, it was a little over 100,000 that we started the same way.
So it, it can be an assumption of mine that we're, I'm not going to look at the financials nine months in and see that any of the money was used for any other project. It would be for cash flow shortfall. And then the emergency fund money would have to become, come before the voters to be utilized. Great, thank you.
Further discussion on Article Four.
My name's Darlene Kelly. I'm curious if there's a capitalization policy at the town so that when you're spending this money, you're following that policy for capital improvements? There's GAAP rules regarding capitalization policies and how much something is to be spent on capital expenditures?
This has nothing to do with capital expenditure. I don't, I'm trying to figure out what the question is.
I'm pretty sure you said that some of this was going to be put into a capital fund to be spent on capital expenditures. So I'm curious if the town has developed a capitalization policy to spend that money. And if they haven't, I would strongly encourage you to do that.
All the capital expenditures was already voted, it's already in part of the budget. It's already line item.
But I want to see a capitalization policy that gives the amount that you can spend on capital expenditures for the town. Do we have a policy about that?
I think, I think we've sort of taken off on a tangent here, not.
Okay, so then my other.
The article speaks of working capital and emergency capital. Those are different than a capital expenditure.
Emergency capital, so if we come short on the building project, there's a policy in place if we have to spend more than 170,000 for capital expenditures on the building?
I think you're using capital two different ways. And that's not, this is, this isn't about a capital project. This is referring to money as working capital. It's not about a capital improvement.
But you're saying capital, it's going into a capital fund for expenditures?
It's going into a reserve fund to provide working capital. That's not a capital investment. That's just money in the bank.
Okay, but I thought the other reserve was a capital reserve.
The other reserve was, they're not, not in this article, but the, the town hall article that we just passed, that was a capital reserve fund.
Okay, then I misunderstood what you're at.
Thank you. Further discussion of Article Four. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Article Four appears to have it. Article Four does have it. You have adopted Article Four. Article Five, Mr. Hughes.
I move the article as warned.
Article Five. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize total general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $2,102,411, of which $1,547,481 shall be raised by taxes and $554,930 by estimated revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021? Is there a second to Article Five? Article Five is moved and seconded. Discussion of Article Five. Mr. Hughes, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, very briefly. Can everyone hear me?
Just yell right at it.
How about now?
Good.
Okay. Sorry about that. We, we just also too want to, hope everyone and your families have been safe, gone through this, and everyone is well, safe, healthy, and glad everyone is here today. So back on the 29th of February, this proposed budget, as read, allows the Select Board to give back $1,000 to taxpayers, 100,000 to taxpayers to offset the total amount due to taxation. These amounts do not reflect what was approved at the annual meeting in February 29, 2020 with appropriations, equipment fund, et cetera. I also want to just speak to one thing. Now, considering what we just went through and considering the fact that Representative Maraki took the time to come down here, appreciate him very much. He seems to be one of the few most accessible people we have, and express how different the financial dynamic across the board is for all of us, federal on down. So to make assumptions this year for us are going to be extremely different than just what we were thinking back in February. Because at the end of the day, what Mike was talking about is you've got federal money is activated potentially, state money is activated potentially, and quite frankly, which we talk about all the time, how this is going to impact our community in a disparate way? How are our citizens going to be impacted as far as taxation? Are they going to be able to meet their obligations? So looking at this budget then on the 28th, let's come in the 29th of February, and where we are now with respect is an active variable. So to make assumptions as to where we were in February and to where we are now needs to be put into place. And we will approach that budget, next budget, giving every consideration to the taxpayer and to our citizens, not just for public safety, but to make sure that the money, whatever that may be, is allocated accordingly. If in fact we end up in a unfortunate situation where funds are going to be less based on what we all went through, what we're all seeing, what we all hear being discussed on the news every day. And I just wanted to make sure that we were there on that. And again, thank you all.
Further discussion of Article Five. Seeing no one at the mic? Uh, we got one coming up.
So I just need a little clarification. The article indicates that we are raising through taxation $1,547,481. When I look at the budget that is proposed, it indicates that we are going to be raising If the difference is the 100,000 that we're getting back from the town from previous, why, when I look at the revenue of 554,000, which is what the article reads, when I read through this budget and I add up all of the revenue lines, am I coming up with 454,930? There's not a direct correlation between what we're voting on and the budget that I'm looking at. And that confuses me.
Someone wish to?
I don't think that there were handouts that gave the budget, but I went online and I grabbed it and I looked at it a few days ago. And I'm, I just can't connect the dots. I'm a number person, I need to be able to. If the 100,000 was in reference to the revenue difference, that's fine, but the amount that we're raising and appropriating for taxes should be what's on our budget. Can anybody speak to that for me?
Anyone wish to address the question?
I know the 100,000 go right to the non-taxpayer revenue.
And, and if it's the non-capital revenue, then that is all of the fees that we charge. When I add up on our budget, it's 454,000. So if you add that 100,000 in, that's where we come up with the 554, which matches the article. Why would the amount that we're raising in taxes not match the budget then?
The only difference is the 15,000.
Nope. If, if you look at the budget that I'm looking at, it was printed April 27th of this year, it clearly reads $1,647,481. I have it right in front of me. It does not match the article.
No. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not. I'm not sure.
Katie, I'm, I'm honestly, I can't, I can't answer your question because I don't know where your number is coming from.
I'm happy to share my document. You can go online right now to our website. You can go to Town Clerk. You can take a look at the articles that we're voting on today. There's a separate attachment. It gives you the revenue and it gives you the expenses.
The only change that we had since February 29th is the Select Board has added $15,000 to the bottom line for.
The Bridge Rehabilitation Fund. I'm clear on that. That's not what I'm questioning.
No, let me finish.
Okay.
They added $15,000 for financial counseling as requested by a taxpayer to, to go through our, our financial protocol and internal controls.
Okay.
So we did that.
Great.
So that has, is the only change from, from the town report that we voted on in, in February to now. And we did the 100,000, giving back that to the taxpayer.
Okay. My question is still, why, when I look at the budget for fiscal year 2020 to 21, or 21, is it reading $1,647,481 is what we need to complete our budget? And on the article, it's $1,547,481. That's, that's my question. Why in the printed material budget am I looking at different from the article?
Again, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to see the document.
Further discussion on Article Five. Mr. You won.
Yeah, with days left of the fiscal year, can you tell me if we're going to have a surplus or a deficit this year, or fiscal, fiscal year 19, 2019 to 2020?
John, at this point, it does look like we will have some surplus. We are definitely not going to be in the red. What that dollar amount is yet, no, I can't tell you that. It looks very good.
Further discussion on Article Five. Are you ready for the question? Seeing no one moving toward the mic, all those in favor of adopting Article Five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'm going to say the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article Five is approved. Article Six, which is any other business. Is there any other business to bring before the meeting? Mr. Axel.
Dan Axel. It is customary at the town meeting to hear from people who are running in contested local elections coming up. And there is a contested election for school board in Westminster coming up on June 25th. I served on the Westminster School Board for 16 years with openness and honesty. I invite you to ask anyone about that, Mr. Moderator. I am concerned that our current school board has caused many problems for our teachers and our administration. I am concerned that the annual school board report shows a 10% drop in our elementary school enrollment, and yet the current school board is offering a level funded budget and boasting about that. I'm concerned that our principal proposed a budget that was more in line with the enrollment drop and the school board ignored it. Not long after that, Principal Cussey has announced his resignation on short notice. I think it's time to get the school board back to doing the essentials of the school board and not causing needless problems.
Thank you. Further, other business to come before the meeting. Mr. Ramos. I'm beginning to recognize people's masks.
Mustard, mustache.
Well, it's the glasses and the masks. It's a good look.
My name is David Ramos, and I agree with what Mr. Axel said. I also served on the school board with him, and I saw it bearing to one side. Now, I personally believe that after being on the school board after a few years, it's time to step aside. Not that you're getting that old, but pass your, your experience, what you have learned to the younger generation. I see the Select Board, for example, there's some new faces there, and I like that. So I see division happening in our community. I would hope that, that there's. So I see division happening in our community. I would hope that that doesn't occur any much more than what it is. And also, I am running for an open seat in the Wyndham County 4th District. I think I have a lot to share personally by my upbringing, my thoughts, my philosophy. I may not have all the answers, but I can guarantee you, as I stand here, that if I ever get a message or a phone call, or anyone reaches out to speak with me, I will give you my time. Because if your time is that important, so is mine to give to you, and there's no excuse not to give it back to you. So I've been in this community for 20-plus years. My kids grew up here, and I've told them that they are who they are because this community helped raise them. It wasn't just our parents, it was you all. So I hope to see you all when we vote, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Other, other business?
All right, very briefly. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but my name is Michelle Boslin. I actually am also running for the Wyndham 4th State Representative seat, which is going to be the spot that Nader Hashim has filled for the last two years. I would welcome talking to anybody after the session today. You can call me, you can email me. I have a website. I am happy to talk to you further about my vision for representing our town. I've lived here since 2003. This is my home. This is where my children and grandchildren grew up as teenagers, and I plan to live in this community the rest of my life. I would be glad to represent us in my corner.
Further, other business, Mr. Allen?
Yes, just to be real quick. I'm Michael and Kevin too. I want to really thank you people for coming out. It's pretty amazing that we had this many people come out for, shows you how the town of Westminster is strengthened with the voters coming out and caring about. We listen to your input. We'll get back to you guys on some of the things you were bringing up. The only reason I was speaking real quick was the town of Westminster owns the building in Gayville. We have put some money into it just to fix the roof and the side, but we're to a point now, we own this building. It does have sewer and water. This really could be a nice building that's successful and used by the town of Westminster. We're to a point where I think that we need to start to look at whether we even keep the building or sell it off. And so I think I'm on that, I want to start a committee. I don't see a lot of North Westminster residents, but it's really for the whole town. And what I'd like to do is start this next year investigating what we could do with a building that does have, it can have a cafeteria in it. We could use it for a lot of things from anything like Westminster cares or other groups that need it. We're in the time now where we don't know how our community is going to change, where the needs are. Be kind of shame to get rid of this building and then turn around and realize we could use it. And this is a very easy, accessible building. When I was a child, we grew up, and that's where we had our town meetings, but that is a building that we now own as the town of Westminster. And like I said, it does have sewer and water and capabilities, but before we put heat in it and water and getting everything going, we need to come back to the voters to explain what we could do with it, who would use it, and how it would benefit us. Thank you.
Further, other business, Mr. Whitford?
Hi, I'm Bob Whitford. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Bob Whitford. I sat on your school board for 13 years, and I was probably on the budget committee for all of them. And I just want to say to everybody here that when you go to town meeting, it is extremely difficult. We had this fellow, Art Littary, you might remember him. He liked to ask difficult financial questions. It is extremely difficult from the floor to be able to do the kind of research that you need to do to answer those kinds of questions. If you have detailed financial questions, call or email your elected officials and ask them before the meeting. If you don't get any satisfaction from that answer, then by all means, bring it up here, but you're just probably not going to get the answers to the questions that you want to hear here. Not because these guys don't want to answer them, but because it's very difficult to do that kind of work under those kinds of circumstances. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Further, other business? Seeing no one at the mic, I will declare Article Six concluded, and this special meeting of the town of Westminster also concluded. Thank you all for coming out.